Hey, thank you, Brian, and welcome, everyone, to this April 24, 2023 meeting of the Homewood City Council. We've got a couple of proclamations or announcements and proclamations tonight. So I'll turn it over to Mayor McCluskey.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do want to recognize the Prescott House for Child Advocacy Center, recognizing them for 35 years of service in the Jefferson County area. Unfortunately, we don't have the proclamation with us tonight, but we will get that to them at a later time. So I do want to just make that announcement. So I appreciate that. And if Judith Wright and your team, board members, whoever else wants to come up here, will do the recognition for National Library Week. Yeah, no problem. You can come up here, it's okay. We'll take pictures, I promise. So whereas libraries provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in lifelong learning, allowing them to live their best life; whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions for all members of the community, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sex, or socioeconomic status; whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity for access for all; whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of the communities, continually expanding their collections, services, and partnerships; whereas libraries play a critical role in the economic vitality of communities by providing Internet and technology access, literacy skills, and support for job seekers, small businesses, and entrepreneurs; whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals; whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting free exchange of information and ideas for all; whereas librarians and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now, therefore, I, Patrick McCluskey, Mayor of the City of Homewood, Alabama, do hereby proclaim April 23 through 29, 2023, National Library Week in the City of Homewood. During this week, I encourage all residents to visit their library to explore the wealth of resources available. So, there you go. You're very welcome.
Thank you, everybody, for celebrating National Library Week. We brought some swag for our city council. Some of them might be in your box. But I just want to say thank you for everyone who supports libraries. They're one of the only places in the United States left where you can go without the expectation of spending money.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. With that, I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. And tonight, we are going to start with an invocation from Counselor Smith. It will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone will please stand.
If you bow your heads and pray with me, please. Dear good and gracious God, we invite you to be present during this meeting and guide us in our deliberations and our discussions. Help us to be respectful, kind, and open-minded, even if we have different opinions. Help us to work as a team rather than individuals promoting our own agendas. May we have a spirit of camaraderie in this room and work together to achieve our shared mission to do what is right and good for the whole of Homewood. Amen.
Ms. Salter, if you will please call roll.
Yes, sir. Counselor Waltney?
Here.
Counselor Gier?
Here.
Counselor Alamon?
Here.
Counselor Wolverton?
Here.
Counselor Sims?
Counselor Jones?
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor Nelms?
Here.
Counselor Andrus?
Counselor Harden?
Here.
And President Wyatt?
Here.
You've got three absent, but you still have a quorum.
All right.
Eight present.
Next, we have the reading of the minutes from our last two council meetings. Those have previously been distributed to the council. We'll start with our regular meeting from March 27, 2023. I'd entertain a motion and second to dispense with the reading of said minutes and for approval of the same.
Motion.
Or second.
All right, motion for Mr. Wolverton, second for Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those are approved eight to zero. And now, we have the minutes from our April 10, 2023 meeting. I would entertain a similar motion.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Waltney and a second from Ms. Nelms. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also approved eight to zero, which brings us to board vacancies. First, we have the Ward Five Abatement Board. My understanding is that we did not receive any applicants for that. So we will reopen that. Give me a second to look at my calendar. We'll reopen that until May 22 at 4:30. Then, we had a Ward Two Beautification Board closed today, and we had multiple applicants for that. So we'll need to do interviews. Do y'all know when you want to do the interviews at this point, or do you?
I guess we had two slip in this.
We have at least two.
Possibly another one I got to confirm because the Ward.
I saw one that was Ward One.
I gotta find out though.
Yeah, we need to make sure that that's Ward One because Ward One didn't have a seat open at the time, but we have two.
The address wasn't Ward Two, though.
Okay. But we have two others.
I just wanted to ask them to comment, I don't know why they applied, so.
Okay. As far as I know, yeah.
All right. So those will be done on Tuesday, May 2. Do you want to start at 5:30?
5:30.
Do y'all need 15 minutes for each one? 20? Got it. All right. We'll get Ms. Salter to set that up, and if there are any problems, we'll let everybody know. All right. And then, lastly, we have a Ward Four Board of Education seat. So I'll turn to my Ward Four representatives.
Yeah, and just right off the bat, I wanted to start by thanking Charlie Douthat for his 10 years of service on the Board of Education. He inherited Alex and I because neither one of us were here when he was appointed. So he was always very kind to include us in discussions and seek our opinions, so we always appreciated Charlie's work, and I'm thankful for his long years of service. Also, wanted to say that we did our interviews last Tuesday. We had six really strong candidates who all really shone in their interviews. They were smart and passionate and all really had a heart to serve the community, so we appreciated all six of the applicants who did apply for that position. But I am proud to nominate Sheetal Cordry as our Ward Four Board of Education representative.
All right. So we have a motion for Ms. Cordry. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second from Ms. Nelms. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved eight to zero. Congratulations to Ms. Cordry. All right. We don't have any additions to the agenda tonight, so I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the agenda.
Motion.
So moved.
All right, motion from Mr. Wolverton, second from Ms. Nelms. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved eight to zero, which brings us to the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion and second for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Wolverton, a second from Ms. Gier. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved eight to zero, which brings us to old business. First item, 010423, request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with the Assistance League of Birmingham and pay fiscal year 2223 appropriations, brought to us by J.J. Bischoff. And we'll start with a report from Finance, which I believe is coming from Ms. Smith tonight.
The committee met last week and voted four to zero to one to recommend approving this item. It is a budgeted item. I believe it's a $5,000 amount, if I'm not mistaken. Motion was made by myself and seconded by Mr. Alamon. The vote was four to zero to one because Mr. Harden had to abstain because I believe he sits on their board.
All right. So we have a motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, so that's seven to zero to one, and will be Resolution 2359. Next item, 020423, request to participate in programs with the Lake Shore Foundation, brought to us by Jeff Underwood and J.J. Bischoff, and another report from Finance, Ms. Smith.
Yes, this is for a project that the Lake Shore Foundation is doing for Ukrainian refugee former soldiers, I believe. And this is a request for funding for $5,000 from carryover fund balance that is coming from a new line item that was created 0111-573-550. The motion was made to approve this by myself and seconded by Mr. Alamon, and the vote was five to zero.
All right. We have another motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved eight to zero and will be Resolution 2360. Next item, 030423, request to amend fiscal year 2223 budget for the Streets Department, brought to us by Berkeley Squires, and another report from Finance, Ms. Smith.
Yes, committee met last week, voted five to zero to recommend approving, amending the Street Materials line item for $28,500 and the Vehicle Maintenance line item from carryover fund balance, motion made by myself and seconded by Mr. Harden.
All right. We have another motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also eight to zero and will be Resolution 2361. Next item, 040423, request for consideration to fund two litigators, brought to us by Berkeley Squires and Counselor Andrus, and another report from Finance, Ms. Smith.
Yes, okay, this one's a little bit weird because we're not actually taking the full amount out for this budget year. We're only amending the budget for $7,500 for this year, and the other one we're going to deal with in the next budget year. But the committee voted five to zero to recommend approval of the $40,000, but making a budget amendment for the $7,500 for this budget year, with the remainder to come in the next budget year. And the motion was made by Mr. Harden and seconded by Counselor Waltney.
All right. So we have another motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also eight to zero and will be Resolution 2362. Next item, 050423, request to set a bid date for City Hall Parking Deck Repair and Restoration Project, brought to us by Wyatt Pugh. We'll go ahead and start with a report from Finance, but then I've got a comment.
Okay.
Of some new information.
Okay. So, I'll see. We voted to recommend amending the general fund carryover balance and adding to the budget to contractual services for $43.75 to fund some of the studies in regards to this, but I think the main thing we were going to do tonight was set the actual bid date for that. And then, we also carried it over in committee so we could continue to discuss it, and the motion was made by myself and seconded by Counselor Alamon.
All right, thank you. And I see, Mr. Pugh, I'm going to get you to correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is that upon further review of the documentation, the work that we're talking about was included in the original contract, so there's no new contract, correct?
That's correct.
And the funding for it, you've got at least close to the amount of funding for it, so we don't need to do any sort of budget amendment or anything at this point. We may hit down the line, maybe, but at this point, we don't need any additional funding. And that part of what we're contracting for is them to actually set the bid date, correct?
That's right.
So this item, as I understand it, can be dropped?
It can, or later this week, I'll have probably a harder date for you. So if you will just carry it over, I should be able to give you a bid date at the next meeting. It's really up to you as to how you want to handle it.
So they're the ones setting the bid date?
Well, yes.
Okay.
It's already carried over. It's already carried over in committee, so we could just, I mean, it's already carried over in committee, so we could just.
What I would say is, let's just.
Drop the budget amendment part?
Yeah, drop the budget amendment part, which will drop the item from this agenda.
Sure.
And we'll leave it in committee, and then you can report to committee if you've got the information at that point.
That'll work.
Okay. I would make a motion to drop the budget amendment portion of this item.
All right. So we have a motion to drop from Ms. Smith and a second from Mr. Harden. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So we're leaving the item in?
In committee.
The name.
In Finance Committee, yes. All right. So that is eight to zero, and that item is dropped, or that portion of that item is dropped from this agenda, and the rest of it will be taken up in committee. All right, next item, 260323, request for permission to sign an indemnification agreement for work performed in the right-of-way at 610 Broadway, brought to us by Cale Smith. And we'll start with a report from Public Works, Mr. Wolverton.
Yes, this item was sent out to council last meeting, sent back to committee, where we had a discussion about an alternative option that we hadn't looked at, but the committee voted five to zero to recommend approval pending the proper indemnification agreement and covenant for tree maintenance that the owner was willing to move forward with. And the motion was made by Counselor Nelms and seconded by Counselor Sims.
All right. Excuse me. So we have a motion from Public Works. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right. So we have, that is a vote of seven to one, and will be Resolution 2363. Next item, 060423, request for consideration to vacate a portion of unnamed city right-of-way adjacent to 328 Redfern Street, brought to us by David Mitchell and Wyatt Pugh. And we'll start with a report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes, the committee voted five to zero to, A, recommend setting a public hearing for June the 12, 2023, and then referred the item out to the full council without recommendation pending that public hearing. The motion was made by Ms. Andrus and seconded by Mr. Alamon.
All right. So we will set that public hearing for June 12, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. Next item, 070423, request for consideration of abolishing the Cable Commission, brought to us by Counselors Andrus and Jones, and start with another report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
I'm sorry, abolishing just sounds hilarious to me. It sounds so dramatic. Yeah, dissolving sounds a little less dramatic. Abolishing sounds so violently overthrow. Okay, the committee voted five to zero to recommend approving abolishing the Cable Commission. We learned from Mr. Kendrick and others, there's not a lot of things that we have anything to do with regulating cable. Now, it's all very federally regulated, so there's really no need for a cable commission anymore. So we voted five to zero to recommend this item, and the motion was made by Mr. Sims and seconded by Ms. Andrus.
All right.
And yes, there's no one, or has it been?
There's no one on it. All right. Mr. Kendrick, if you could give us a first read.
Yes, there's an ordinance to dissolve the agency of the City of Homewood, previously known as the Homewood Cable TV Commission, whereas the Homewood Cable TV Commission was previously organized pursuant to ordinance 1362, previously adopted on July 9, 1979 by the City Council, whereas the terms of the previously appointed members of the Cable Commission have expired, whereas the federal law has exclusively addressed the powers, duties, and responsibilities previously established for the Cable TV Commission, and whereas the City Council determined being in the public interest to dissolve the Homewood Cable TV Commission. Now, therefore, we're already ordained by the City Council that the City Council does by adoption this resolution dissolve the previously created Homewood Cable TV Commission created by ordinance 1367. Section 2, that ordinance 1367, previously adopted July 9, 1979, is hereby specifically repealed by the adoption of this ordinance. Section 3, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by the City Council, approval by the mayor, is otherwise becoming law.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? If not, then I entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Ms. Smith, second from Ms. Nelms, and a roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Counselor Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nelms?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes. All right, so that is eight to zero. Now, I would entertain a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Second. Motion from Ms. Gier, second from Mr. Wolverton, and another roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Counselor Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nelms?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes. All right, so that's approved eight to zero and will be ordinance 2865. Next item, 080423, request for consideration to permit use of the City Hall Plaza for summer and fall tournaments by Cornhole BHM, a social cornhole league, brought to us by John Petritoni of Cornhole BHM, and Wyatt Pugh, and another report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes, the committee voted five to zero to recommend approving this item pending receiving the schedule, which I'm thinking we're going to get tonight, and the motion was made by Ms. Andrus and seconded by Ms. Gier.
All right. So is someone here with the schedule?
Yes, they're here.
Come on up.
Come on up.
There's a signed sheet there for just a regular.
Okay. We got one in both places?
Can you tell us how to pronounce that last name?
Petritoni.
That was close. I feel bad because y'all have been here multiple times. I don't know, I got none right once.
I always try to put especially.
It's Irish, right?
I put a big Italian spin on it when I say it.
Yes, we got the dates approved for Soho by Oscar down in Soho for June 12 through July 17 for summer league, for the fall league, September 11 through October 16.
Say that again, June 12?
June 12 through July 17, and then September 11 through October 16.
And that's on Mondays?
Yes, sir.
So, okay, just on Monday night?
Yes.
Those Monday nights? So it won't conflict with our next item?
No, no, no.
Okay. Just making sure.
And I can't remember timing. Y'all start at like?
Six to about 7:30.
Okay, awesome.
Yes, ma'am.
And y'all are trucking the boards in and out now?
Yes, ma'am.
Y'all are not leaving? Okay, perfect. All right, thank you.
All right. So we have a motion from Special Issues. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that's going to be seven to zero because Mr. Harden stepped out for a second. Okay. We'll vote one more time. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I can watch out because I can't keep.
So it's eight to zero, and that will be Resolution 2364. All right, next item, 090423, request to use Plaza for a street vault competition on July 8, 2023, brought to us by Chris Spear and J.J. Bischoff, and start with another report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes, the committee voted five to zero to recommend approving the use of both the Plaza and Rosewood Hall for the event that we're going to call, that they're going to call, I should say, Vulcan Vault. And the motion was made by Ms. Andrus and seconded by Mr. Alamon. And I'm just going to, for one second, ask y'all to indulge me before we vote. This was brought to us by Mindy Walden and Brooks Vault, Pull Vault Coach. What is Chris's last name?
Weir.
Yeah, Chris Weir. And he actually has people he's training for state competition now, so Mindy came in his stead, but we have a video to show of what this looks like. They do this every year in Mobile, and so there's a video of it, and it's. And so this goes on, this really is like an all-day event, and Chris has his pull vaulters competing, not really competing, but vaulting all day long, and they're going to set it out on the thing, and then people can, you know, go to the restaurants. It's going to be a really cool thing, I think. And Mindy sent, they've even kind of mocked up a logo for the event that looks really neat, and we're going to get, oh, there it is, yeah. So, and all people come out and watch, and there's about 150 kids that participate, so anyway, it's really cool. And they have their own insurance, I will say out loud.
They have their own insurance, and as I understand it, they're renting Rosewood Hall as well as the Plaza.
Yes, that's correct.
Lobby.
Yes, the lobby. Yeah.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion from Special Issues. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also eight to zero and will be Resolution 2365. All right. This brings us to our next item, 120323, a public hearing set for tonight for consideration to approve a text amendment to the city zoning ordinance for West Homewood District. This comes to us from the Planning Commission, which had a vote nine to zero with a favorable recommendation, and ultimately from Cale Smith. And so we have, this was already reported out by Planning and Development, so there's no additional report tonight. So with that, I will go ahead and ask Mr. Smith to come up here, and I will open the public hearing. Mr. Smith, if you will just give us a rundown of what the amendment is.
Sure. So there are three changes to the existing Westonwood District ordinance. The first one, I'll just bump through those three changes. The first one comes from Section 1, number four, pre-existing conditions lots. And so newly-planted lots must meet a dimensional requirement in West Homewood, right? And so some of these lots that are larger are currently non-conforming, and there's really no way to carve them up to make them conforming because of the size that they are and right-of-way access that they have. So what the revision does is to make any newly-planted lots of a certain size, in this case, three and a half acres, to be made to comply with the West Homewood dimensional requirements. So that's the first one. The second one is under Section 2, number nine, urban standards. The regulating plan, the district allows and encourages mixed use, both vertically and horizontally. So the current text suggests that varying uses can be on the same block, but what we also added to that is, are within the same lot. And then, the third one is adding a definition of townhouse under the multifamily definition under Section 3. So we defined what a townhouse is, it's a two or three-story building with two or more single-family dwellings attached side by side, and reading is a continuous facade. And then, we say that townhouses are permitted on sites three and a half acres or more, and that those sites must also have a mixed-use multifamily dwelling component to it.
Okay. All right.
Good.
Does anyone have any, before Mr. Smith sits down, does anyone on the council have a question for Mr. Smith?
I assume there's probably not very many three and a half acre lots still available in West Homewood?
There are none. Somebody, I think somebody asked in the committee meeting, the size of the church lot, and it's 3.24 acres.
Okay. All right. All right. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? If so, please come on up. If not, then, yeah, come on.
Hey, how are y'all?
Good. Please just sign in there, tell us your name and.
Home or business address?
Home is fine.
Okay. My name's Brian Krogsgard. I am a business owner in West Homewood, two adjoining properties to the one under consideration on Oxmore Drive, or Oxmore Road, and I just wanted to reiterate support that this is going to be a really good thing for the neighborhood in terms of supporting other endeavors, especially in terms of supporting other endeavors, especially within the Entertainment District and with the retail developments that are going on along there. And there's quite a united group of business owners and property owners that feel similarly and also look forward to the city's continued investment in the West Homewood Entertainment District. And it seems like a really good opportunity to move the neighborhood forward.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody else? Yeah, come on up, Tom.
Hi, my, my name is Tom Walker, I'm with Village Creek Development, I'm the principal of the firm that's developing this property. Mr. President, I was just really wanting to come up and make sure, I know we have some people here that might want to talk about this, just to be clear about sort of what the mechanism for the evening was. This is a text amendment to the zoning modification and if it is successful in passing, then our final development plan will be considered and it's up for conversation as well as the next agenda item, correct?
Correct, so. If the text amendment is approved, the next item will also have a public hearing. The text amendment, as I understand it, would have to be approved in order for the development plan to, to be approved.
Correct, I'm just trying to give people an idea.
No, and that's what I'm trying to explain is, so. This item has to be approved for the next item to be approved. There, there is a public hearing associated with each item, so feel free to get up and talk both times, one time, that, that's up to each individual as to when they want to talk.
Well, in the spirit of that, I would, I would suggest that anyone had anything to talk about, our project in general now would be a good time to come up and at least show support of it because it could be the one and only time they have the chance to give support of it.
Well, I, so, yeah, I think from a legal standpoint, what we need to do is ta, is talk about the text amendment first.
Okay.
And then we can talk about the development.
The text amendment has nothing to do with your development.
Correct, correct.
Yeah. The, yeah, the text amendment could be approved and the development plan could still be denied, but the text amendment is necessary, but I think your point is well-taken that the text amendment is necessary for the development plan to be approved.
Correct.
So, but the only, I, this item, this public hearing about this item is about the text amendment. And I know all this is confusing and, and sort of hyper-technical, but, but that's the deal. So feel free to come up and talk about the zone, the change in the zoning, which will affect.
The ability.
The ability of the development plan to come up.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
My name's Matt Obernader, ten eighty-one Sherbrooke Circle.
Sorry, what was your name again?
Matt Obernader. I, I just want to real briefly on this one, stand in support of this because if this doesn't happen, like you just said, the reason that a lot of people from West Homewood that are here, you know, makes something possible. So again, I don't see any issue with this amendment as far as this redevelopment is concerned, so I just want to quickly stand in support for that.
All right, thank you very much.
Um, I would like to speak in favor of this as well, I believe when council amended the. Whatever amendment amended, amended this to take townhouses out, I'm not really sure, it was the last one, but there've been quite a few.
It was the last one.
Was it the last one, there's been so many, I can't keep track. I think it was done as a knee-jerk reaction to a particular project and I don't think any of the other parcels there will be impacted by this or affected in any way. So I think this is what we need to do for this project.
I know who you are, but will you just say your name for the record?
Beverly Labouche, thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, if there's anyone else that, that's planning on coming up and talking, there's another signup sheet right here and you can go ahead and be signing up.
Uh, Michael Eady, one thirty-three Gillan Drive. I am also in support of the amendment here, ultimately, anything that is going to prevent the development that is going to knock down the O'Connell Lodge, which is, you know, a devastating item for our neighborhood, I am in full support of, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, my name's Taylor Raul, two fifty-two Raleigh Avenue. Everything that Michael said, I agree with, I think, be a positive influence on the neighborhood, always my support.
Hi, Paul Harbin, one forty-nine Gillan Drive, and I am in full support of this amendment.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jill Kimbrel, twenty-four fifteen Huntington Glen Drive, and I'm in full support of this text amendment as well.
All right, anybody else?
My name is Nicole Burton and I'm here representing Meg and Armon Marjica, who are out of town, the business owners of Buka Daily Edition and et cetera, which are right across from this development. We are in support of this development.
Hi, my name is Chris Kane, I'm one of the owners of Salon Verago, which is in building one eight six, directly across the street from the O'Connell Lodge. So needless to say, we are in support of any new development that can go there in place of the O'Connell Lodge, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, if not, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and ask if there are any questions or comments from council. Nope? No one? Okay.
I do have one.
Yeah.
So, Mr., Ms. Walker, right? One of the questions I had was related to, with the transition from when we first talked about this, we were discussing them being for sale. Since then, it's changed that they'll be rental units. So, as we know, apartments, rental townhouses, all of those things tend to have a life cycle. While you're the first owner, you're a homeward resident, you do a really good job taking care of those. Then, second owner, third owner, we continue to see declines. How can we, I guess, seek some guarantees that the condition of these will kind of reflect what the neighborhood expects long-term?
So, Councilor Waltney, thank you for your question. To, to clarify, th, these have always been rental units that we've come in and we've brought into council, to Planning Commission from the get-go. We understand the question, this is about a thirty-three million dollar project all in. Our, 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 our property manager that we've selected to engage in this project with us is Arlington Properties. And I will tell you that anybody who is, us for sure, who's building a thirty-three million dollar project or anyone who's buying a thirty-three million dollar project and, and, you know, prior to us, will have a property management company that will be in charge of maintaining them. City has certain ordinances and abilities to control what properties look like from a rental standpoint outside of that. And all I can tell you, I mean, from, from my perspective, is that from the investment grade of what this project is, a management and residential company that is going to manage that will be a necessary part of it.
Sure.
I've, I've provided rules and regulations to council, it's something that would be provided if this were ever transitioned into for-sale product. But in order for that to happen, we would have to go through a condominium, condominiumization process and we'd have to be back before council in general and we'd have to be able to address how these would be managed on a for-sale basis going forward.
Okay, yeah, excuse me. The, maybe I missed that early on, I thought when we first had the discussion.
No, sure, I'm sorry if I missed anything.
We were talking about them being for sale because I thought that was a good option too, it's a need we have in the city. And I'm not, honestly, I'm not concerned about you and not even concerned about the fire for the tenure because I'm sure these will be taken care of, but like we've seen with apartments in the city, over time, we tend to have a degradation of quality to the third and fourth owners as they get handed down, ORIs get tighter and et cetera. So those are just some thoughts I had, but you mentioned the funding or the cost of the project, do you have your funding secured for this project?
We have term sheet from our lender that we're working with to get through it. Part of it is making sure that we have the proper zoning in place to be able to accommodate that. And then we also have proper equity commitments to be able to make up the difference of it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Mr. Wolverton?
I, I just want to reiterate that we do have a neighboring property that, that is, apartments has been for decades. And I do think obviously that who runs them and who keeps them makes a difference, Chastain, right, right down or across the street, basically. If you talk to Police and Fire Department and others in the city, you know, there are some examples of properties that are kept up that produce, you know, good tenants and don't seemingly cause difficulties for the city, so. I think it can be done, I, I share, share the concern long-term, I think, you know, I, I, you know, that everybody here wants to see, see that same outcome.
Sure.
And I think you, you have that intention at heart, so.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? If not, Mr. Kendrick, will you go to first reading, please?
It's an ordinance to amend Section Four entitled Pre-Existing Conditions Lots, to amend Section Nine entitled Urban Standards, to amend definitions of multifamily as provided in Section Sixteen entitled Glossary Definitions, all of Section EE entitled The West Homewood District of Article Four entitled District Uses of Appendix A entitled Zoning Ordinance of the City of Homewood. Bill named by the City Council as follows, Section One, the Section Four entitled Pre-Existing Conditions is amended to read as follows. Pre-existing conditions, lots, existing lot within the West Homewood District shall not be subject to the lot dimensions, width and depth, requirements of Section Eleven Urban Standards G and H unless the lot is subdivided. Newly plotted lots with an area of less than three point five acres shall be dimensioned, dimensioned as according to Section Eleven of the Urban Standards, Section G and H. Section Two, the Section Nine entitled Urban Standards is amended to read as follows. Urban Standards, Section A, regulating plan, the regulating plan allocates and establishes the West Homewood District provides significant mixture of land uses and urban forms which meet the intent, Section One of the ordinance. The regulating plan shall also identify areas in the West Homewood District which are subject to the regulations of the ordinance. The West Homewood District is delineated on the regulating plan using streets-based classification. The street-based classification designates the West Homewood District divided by rights-of-way and subject to lots adjacent to and fronting the designated rights-of-way. Subparagraph I, the intent of the West Homewood District is to facilitate a dense mixed-use development with pedestrian-oriented character along Scott Street, Oxmore Road and Oak Grove Road. The district allows for both vertical mixed-use retail or office on-ground floor and offices or residential on upper floors and horizontal, horizontal mixed-use varying uses side by side with the same block or within the same lot. Section Two, the regulating plan also designates primary and secondary side streets and primary and secondary facades for the lots within the West Homewood District. The primary street is fronted, is fronted by the primary facade of the principal building, while the secondary street is fronted by the secondary facade and only when indicated on the regulating plan by the primary facade of the principal building. Corner lots are the only lots to have primary and secondary street designations. For mid-block lots fronting a street, the street shall be the primary street. Alley's, passages and service lanes are not primary or secondary streets. When a mid-block lot fronts two streets, both streets shall be designated primary streets per City Council and shall be fronted by a primary facade. Section Three, the definition of multifamily provided in Section Sixteen entitled Glossary Definitions is amended to read as follows, Section Sixteen, multifamily, multifamily, a building containing two or more dwelling units, the following dwelling unit, building types are allowed, multi-use multifamily dwellings, a multi-story building with a non-residential use located at the street level and two or more dwelling units located on the upper level. Townhouses, two or three-story buildings with two or more single-family dwellings attached side by side and reading as a continuous facade. Townhouses are permitted on sites three point five acres or more, which site shall also contain at least one mixed-use multifamily dwelling as defined herein. Section Four, that all the provisions of the West Homewood District except as set out here and above shall remain in full force and effect. Section Five, April twenty-fourth, at six o'clock PM is the time and place for the public hearing, at which time all persons who have an interest will be, may appear before and be heard. Section Six, if any part of provisions or ordinance declared to be unconstitutional or invalid by Court of Confiscation jurisdictions, all other parts of provisions not affected thereby shall remain in full force and effect. Section Seven, ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by the City Council, approval by the mayor is otherwise becoming law.
All right, thank you very much. With that, I'd entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent. All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Alamon and a second from Mr. Wolverton and a roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Councilor Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Geer?
Yes.
Councilor Alamon?
Yes.
Councilor Wolverton?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Nils?
Yes.
Councilor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes. All right, so that is eight to zero, now I'd entertain a motion and a second for approval. All right, the motion again by Mr. Alamon, second by Mr. Wolverton. Any questions or comments? Another roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Hi, Councilor Waltney?
No.
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 Councilor Geer?
Yes.
Councilor Alamon?
Yes.
Councilor Wolverton?
Yes.
Councilor Smith? Councilor Nils?
Yes.
Councilor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
No. So that is approved, six to two, and will be ordinance twenty-eight sixty-six. Which brings us to our next item, thirteen oh three twenty-three, public hearing set for tonight for consideration to approve a final development plan for one ninety-five Oxmore Road and five thirty-six Cobb Street. The applicants Village Creek Development for the proposed redevelopment of the O'Connell Lodge Motel property as the site of a new mixed-use development comprising a combination of residential and retail uses. This comes to us from Planning Commission with a vote of nine to zero, favorable recommendation and from Cale Smith. This item was also reported out from P and D a number of weeks ago. So we will go ahead and start again by opening the public hearing. Mr. Walker is already at the podium. If you want to go ahead and start, it's fine, fine to start with you.
Sure, absolutely, you know, speaking with Cale, I, I think we've, we've gone through our presentation as to what our development plan is several times, I'm happy to run back through that with council if it would be beneficial for you guys to see that again.
I think it would be beneficial simply because it's a public hearing and some people may or may not have seen the earlier, so.
Absolutely, so I'll go through and give a high level and if anyone feel, please feel free to stop me and ask questions as we, as we move through it. As you guys know, what we're looking at right here is actually the assemblage of two parcels. It's the existing O'Connell Lodge Hotel and the existing Allbritton Dental Parcel. The Allbritton Dental Parcel is on the south end of the drawing that you're looking at right now. And then the O'Connell Lodge fronts Oxmore Road up at the northwest portion of the building, or northwest portion of the parcel. As, as, as now required by zoning, we do have a mixed-use multifamily dwelling along Oxmore Road. This is a ten, or to eleven thousand square foot floor-point building that is three floors. The ground floor is occupied, will be occupied by two restaurants. And, and we have green space outside for that, parking to the southwest of it. Above that building, above that floor, we have two floors of loft-style units, that'll be rental properties. There are two bedrooms, two bathrooms, and as you can see from this, this, this room, it kind of shows what the perspective looks like looking, this is really looking from across Oxmore Road at the project. Driving into the development, we have forty-eight three-bedroom, two and a half bathroom, bathroom townhouses. Those are rental units as well, and then we have three two-bedroom, two and a half bathroom rental townhouses. The concept that we've come up with, with Pool and Company, our architect, and Shoal Engineering, our civil engineer, is a concept that shares a common green space, as you can see here, with folks from all different types of life, all different ages, enjoying a common green space with townhouses facing out onto the common green space. And then they, they all will have a single one-car garage and then they'll also have an off-street park designated for parking as well in the townhouses. We are, we are contemplating improvements to Cobb Street. As you can see here in the top right image, what this image shows is new on-street parking, it shows a sidewalk going into Cobb Street. And then it also shows, the, 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 the image in the bottom left shows what the sort of rear side or the vehicular side of what the townhouses will look like. The goal of the West Homewood District is to promote pedestrian walkability, high, high density and vibrancy in a neighborhood, and what we've come up here, with here, we believe certainly accomplishes that. We are eliminating what I call, this is an addition by subtraction project. Everyone here is familiar with what happened at the O'Connell Lodge. I think even as recently as last weekend or last week, you know, schoolchildren were affected and how they were dropped off at the, at, at Hulk Ken Elementary School as a direct result of this hotel. It's something that I have received overwhelming support for in how we have gone out and communicated with the city or with the community at the city's recommendation. I've not really heard any, any feedback negatively about the project and we believe it's, it's a tremendous value add for West Homewood and something that'll really change the way West Homewood operates in, in a catalytic way. So, if anyone has any questions about it, I'm happy to discuss and answer anything anybody has outstanding on it.
Does anyone have any questions now or we may call you back up afterwards, but, Mr. Kendrick?
I have a question, Cale, maybe you need to clarify this, but Exhibit A which you provided to me that shows the parking
Well, that's the actual development, yeah, so, sorry, Mr. Kendrick, that is, that's the actual development plan that Shoal prepared and that would be what we are suggesting to adopt. What we had up earlier was another slide that really was more of a landscaping plan to be able to help visualize what the concept was. The, the development plan, yes, sir.
Perfect, just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page. All right, anybody else here to speak for or against this item? Please feel free to come up and like I said, if anyone else wants to come up and sign over by Ms. Salter, they can go ahead and do that while someone else, you can go ahead.
Michael Leedy, one thirty-three Gillan Drive. I would just like to commend Tom. Tom has been very diligent in the neighborhood, meeting with folks, getting feedback throughout the development process and the ideation stage for him once he purchased the land. I've been at several of those gatherings and there has been zero negative feedback for Tom. I've yet to speak to a single person in our neighborhood or a single business in our neighborhood that would not welcome not only the fifty townhomes, but obviously the new restaurants and the development that it would bring to our neighborhood. The other point that Tom made just as recently as last week, I was on a text thread where my kids were no longer able to walk to school because a crime had taken place at the Econo Lodge and our wonderful police officers were now chasing a criminal through the neighborhood while I attempted to get my children to school. So I think if we are truly worried about our schools and the things that are happening, then we should be very concerned about criminals running around our neighborhood and this is not the first time. My neighbor across the street had one arrested in their crawl space. So this is common for us in West Homewood to be dealing with things that are coming from the Econo Lodge. The fact that Tom has made the investment into purchasing this property and has had the vision to bring something like this to our neighborhood, I for one, my family and all four kids and my wife especially are very excited about the idea of that decrepit hotel going away and alleviating at least a portion of the crime that comes from these hotels. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Obernader, ten eighty-one Sherbrooke Circle. One of my favorite parts about living on that part of West Homewood, kind of back in the Parkside neighborhood, is how far away from the Econo Lodge that my family is because we certainly, I mean, I mean, I kind of say that a little bit in jest, but also it's true. I mean, I have no issues with my kids in my cul-de-sac running around freely and playing. I know that if we lived in much closer, that becomes a little bit more problematic. It's certainly something I don't have to stress about as much, but as my kids, you know, a second grade kindergarten and a two-year-old get to the age where they want to ride their bikes to Hall Kent, I just would feel much safer knowing that that hotel was gone. I moved here in two thousand and two when my dad was the Methodist minister at Oakmont before it became Trinity West and when I moved here, Patriot Park didn't exist. It was a giant field that used to be an old driving range slash golf course at one point in time. The senior center didn't exist, the pool did not exist and all those improvements have been made to make West Homewood a really special place and the Econo Lodge was here in two thousand and two, looking about the same that it does right now and that's maybe, it might have been better honestly than it is right now, I would hope. So it just seems to me like this is an obvious next step in the redevelopment of West Homewood and just making the area nicer and like we said, safe. You mentioned your walkability and there's just, it's limited as you get to that portion of West Homewood. And so I, I know there's some concerns as always with rentals, but I will take some new neighbors over the current ones all day long as far as I'm concerned. So that's all I want to say, just want to feel safe again in West Homewood and fully support this redevelopment.
Thank you. Next.
I, I hate to do this, but during the, you're fine, you can come on up. It's not about you.
Yeah, she can come up too. No, 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 she's fine.
She's a resident.
No, 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 she's fine. It was the applause during public hearings and it doesn't matter what public hearing we're talking about, we don't have applause because we don't want to encourage or discourage anyone from getting up and speaking their mind. So please, if you will withhold from any comments or applause from the gallery, it's not that we don't appreciate your passion and we're happy for you to come up and speak your passion, but if you will, just make it from the podium. So thank you. Go ahead.
Hello, good evening. My name is Ashley Cox, I live at two-two-four Kent Drive and I'm here in support of the demolition of the Econo Lodge. We have one child that walks to school, we'll eventually have four and the safety of my children is the reason that we're here. There's been a lot of crime, a lot of disruption and I feel like this is a great solution. It adds so much potential to West Homewood just to become, you know, a better district. More people will be visiting, we're going to get a lot of income from these restaurants or whatever they want to build there and we're really excited about it.
Thank you very much.
Hey, I'm Ashley Driscoll, I sign in over here. Those are my kids, James, Catherine, we have Henry, who's at baseball practice with his dad right now and I'm in so much support of the demolition of the Econo Lodge that I was willing to bring these two and sit through a quiet meeting so that we could say so. And just as, you know, Michael spoke and another neighbor that's over there, my eight-year-old is big buddies with their eight-year-olds and they live close to the Econo Lodge and I would love to be able to say, hey, just ride your bike over to, to see the kids on Gillan and I don't feel comfortable doing that at this time. And we sacrifice a lot as a family to live in West Homewood in a very small house. We could have a lot bigger house in Hoover or Vestavia and we sacrifice that for the walkability and for the community and I think that it's ridiculous that we even have this problem right now. So I'm in favor of whatever they want to develop, but I really love this plan and I'm thankful for the investment in our neighborhood.
Thank you very much.
Beverly LeBov, six seventeen Edgemore Drive. I've lived in West Homewood for twenty-three years. This property, when I moved to West Homewood, had lovely Comfort Inn with a community room that was used by many groups and I went, I was a member of a group that had regular meetings there and it was lovely to go there. I had friends who stayed in that Comfort Inn, I had no problem recommending it. The property has become an eyesore at best and a place for various illegal transactions at the worst. It's past time to remove this from our neighborhood. While this project may not be the ultimate one that we might hope for, it's the most reasonable use of the property today. Ingress and egress do not lend this property towards a lane park in Mount Brook, which might be the pie in the sky type property, project, but this project will have multiple types of buildings aimed at various tenants and residents, two restaurants, both very popular in their current locations, and an arcade for the kids and the big kids to play in. Townhouses for families as well as empty nesters and a loft section that is handicapped accessible for those of us who would like to, I'm going to borrow a phrase from Jenny, age and place and those who are differently abled. As an employee of United Ability, I love this aspect of this project. Diversity is the key to the success of West Homewood and this project will add to and enhance the diversity we already have and I fully support it.
Thank you very much.
Again, my name is Jill Kimbrel, twenty-four fifteen Huntington Glen Drive. I am going to speak kind of wearing several hats today. I'm a thirty-plus year homeowner in West Homewood. Three years ago, at the beginning of COVID, May of, after everything shut down, we moved in Homewood, could have moved anywhere in Homewood, chose to again move within the boundary of West Homewood. We love our community and we love this side of Homewood. There are things we don't love about it and the Econo Lodge is definitely one of those. But my husband is a business owner in Homewood. He, his business was in Homewood long before we moved here and I also sit on the Homewood Board of Education in the Ward Two seat. So I'm going to start by speaking as a community member and I think it's important to recognize and acknowledge what is good for one area of Homewood is good for all of Homewood. Besides being unsightly, things happening on this property are just simply unacceptable. How it's gone on this long is embarrassing and I feel responsible for it too as a, as a resident homeowner for not demanding better. We as a community cannot condone what takes place on this property. It's not good for West Homewood and therefore it's not good for Homewood period. I am concerned about our kids. I do not live near the property, but all of our kids at some point have been down there, have gone to the gas station, have been in that area and it's not safe. I think we all need to be committed to taking care of and cleaning up any area of our community that poses any kind of danger, threat, or concern and the Econo Lodge clicks all three of those, checks every box. I'm also going to speak now as a school board member, but I'm not speaking on behalf of the school board. I'm here speaking as a nine-year member that has been sitting on the school board for nine years. First, I had been contacted by a few people talking about the impact of this development on the school system. So I wanted to speak to that and say the school, well, let's first start with this. The school board is extremely grateful for the city. I think everybody in this room knows without the city's support, we could not do what we do. The local support that we get from, from this city council is what sets us apart from every other school system anywhere. It's the key ingredient that helps us provide the standard of excellence in education that is expected in Homewood. Our school board, the school board in general, is tasked with providing a Homewood education to every school age residence in our community. The growth trend in our schools has been consistent, this is nothing new. Our numbers grow each year. This is something we have grown to accept and expect and we are constantly talking about it, creatively planning for it and trying to always get ahead of it. We are dedicated to our students and our education and we are excited to provide each of our students with a Homewood education and that will continue. This development is proposing a finite number of units and even if every unit had students, we will continue to look at creative solution and find ways to make it work and we will make it work. A Homewood education is a wonderful gift for students and we're committed to the instruction and culture in our schools and will uphold the high standards of excellence we have always provided. This is not a mega apartment complex. That would, that would change my opinion, possibly make me ask more questions, but we can absorb this in our system. We're talking about, I'm not like exactly, but doing the math, we're spacing these out. These aren't all kids going to Hall Kent, these aren't all kids going to one grade. They're going to thirteen grades across the system. We can absorb that and we can do that. Anyone using our schools as a reason to stop this development, it's an excuse. We can do it. And with all that being said, in my opinion, not moving forward with this project is negligent and in the best, and is not in the best interest of our community and our children and I am very hopeful each member of the council will support this and voted in favor. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Taylor Raul, two fifty-two Raleigh. I just wanted to say, I went to preschool at the Methodist Church in the early nineties and then we moved to Montgomery and Montgomery's got its own problems and things that, you know, when you're wanting to settle a family that aren't great about public schools and Homewood was a place that I wanted to be because of the great things that it offers. So I've been here since I graduated from Auburn and we moved in the neighborhood in two thousand and twenty and my wife moved in twenty-one when we got married. But at the same point, it's really jarring when you wake up on a Saturday morning and you've got a gunshot hole through your car that was just sitting on the street and when you call and you're like, well, you know, Econo Lodge and you're kind of out and you have that and so there are aspects to it that it's just kind of unsettling sometimes to have Econo Lodge. So anything that would come into that place, I'd be in full support of, but at the same time to have two amenities like El Bario and Paramount, they do great additions and I'm in full support and I think sometimes it's easy to look at Homewood and think something could be something that we don't desire, but if you look at people from other cities and the things that they go through versus what this city has to nitpick about, they're totally different. And anybody in Montgomery would do about anything to have something like this in their perimeter in the community. So full support and I'll quit talking. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Nicole Burton, not only as an employee of et cetera that's across the street from the Econo Lodge at one eighty-six Oxmoor, again, also speaking on behalf of the three businesses from Megan, Armond, or Marjaca. Those businesses have been there for the last two years, opened in the middle of COVID. It's been really exciting to invest in the West Homewood neighbor, neighborhood and not only for, from a safety perspective of those of us that currently work in those businesses, we're excited to see the Econo Lodge go away, but we're really excited to welcome neighbors that will continue to bring some foot traffic into our neighborhood and join us as we invest in this community and also create a really fun destination for people to come from all over the city, not just Homewood, but from downtown and, and all across Birmingham. And we've seen that with our three businesses and it's been really exciting to welcome a neighbor that will join us in that endeavor.
Thank you very much.
Again, Paul Harbin, one four-nine Gillan Drive. I think some people have come up here and, you know, pretty much said everything that I could say in terms of the way that this would change the lives for the people in the neighborhood, the neighborhood itself and itself and what it would do for each of us that lives here. And, you know, initially, those are my thoughts as well. That's what I think, you know, what it can do for Homewood at large, tax revenue, I think suddenly this place can be not only another part of Homewood, but it's a destination. And I think that helps in, you know, certainly from a financial standpoint as well. But one of the things that I think is getting missed is that, that we also have an amazing opportunity to take away a host place for human trafficking that it's just one fell swoop. I mean, what, what does that do for our police department? What does it do for the FBI? And what does it do to help shut down part of that industry even though it's just one small part of it? But so even well beyond what it can do for us, maybe it's that person who is, has been caught up in human trafficking, maybe it's those victims there that this is one less place where they can be taken advantage of. And I think that's a huge opportunity for us right now if, even if nothing else good came of it. So thank you for considering this, very much appreciated.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
My name's Brian Crousguard again. I said earlier, I'm at fourteen eleven Ardsley Place in Ward One. Over the past couple of years, it's really been a privilege to invest in West Homewood and be a part of the neighborhood. Had an opportunity to live there for a year and really enjoyed it and fell in love with the area and was able to purchase two properties right there. I'll be neighbors with this development and I just wanted to talk a little bit about some of the current things that come up when you're trying to consider how to redevelop a property, whether it's financially feasible, what the highest and best use case of a property could be, what the city can do to participate in the deal, what the city may decide not to do. These are really important questions that come up with any development and I think, I want to credit Village Creek for trying to consider how can they make a business decision and a community decision at the same time. It's really hard. I'm trying to do the same thing now. I've had some people that have encouraged me to wipe the slate clean and make it as absolutely dense as possible with the least amount of local amenities possible. It's really tempting sometimes to do that and pull in a lot of outside money. It's a lot better, in my opinion at least, to invest locally in the community, to listen to people. It's been amazing actually hearing from some of the neighbors who probably wonder what some of those other properties are over there. But there are people investing heavily in West Homewood to try to improve the neighborhood and improve the city. I've lived here since two thousand and eleven and actively investing in Homewood and Birmingham. And I think this is an amazing place. I was really excited to see that the city council and members of the community were willing to invest in the area, in this, in that corridor right there that I think can be a massive tax center for the city to raise money, to see business investment and that's what the business owners over there are doing extremely actively right now. I probably talked to ten people today, none of them were Tom, that was just purely trying to figure out how to make partnerships work with other Homewood residents. Other people that are here, investing here, have families here, have kids here, play for the peaches, that's, that's the type of stuff that people are doing and these are local investments and thirty-three million dollars is a lot of money. It's a lot of money. And there will be other money. It's a lot of money. And there will be other, other things on your desks in the coming year. And I hope that the council and people who are participating in this process will see the feedback that exists for this, which is a big property, and a lot going on, and a lot of money, and sees the investments, like you heard from the 169 building and from some other properties in the area, and that you hear what the cases being made are for what we're trying to accomplish, to do for the local community and to invest in the local community, and that y'all participate actively in that process, because everyone over there is trying really hard to make it work in the best way possible. I own 169 Oxmoor and 173 Oxmoor. Would love to talk to anybody. I've talked to my council representatives and would love to talk to anyone who has any questions about what can happen there in the future, because there will be needs for the city to participate in that process in the future. There are some major needs and questions, and this is going to be a massive benefit, because it pulls 100-plus new homes, not just residents, just new homes that are going to be part of this neighborhood. And that's really important, because I've run the numbers, I've talked to other people who've run the numbers. West Homewood by itself does not support the West Homewood Entertainment District. It just doesn't. There's not enough houses. There's not enough people. You need both the West Homewood Entertainment District and the West Homewood area, and you need to make a destination that people will visit and think of the same way that they think of other outstanding destinations in the city. That's what this can be. That's what people are actively working to invest in, in a local, connected way. So I hope that you'll support this and also the things that come across in the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, then I will close the public hearing and ask if there are any questions or comments from council.
Yeah, I'd like to begin by thanking Tom and for the thoughtful approach in this development. I want to highlight the fact that these are Homewood folks invested in Homewood. Everyone involved in this project has roots in the city and cares deeply about the economic development in the city, but also the community that represents it. I want to thank all the residents for coming out here today. I think it's always meaningful when we get neighbors to speak their position on any particular project. This kind of project is the reason why I ran for city council. The opportunity to revitalize our area, to really think about our children, to think about what it means to create a community that is close-knit, that is supports one another through economic projects, through residential projects, that really lifts up West Homewood and brings it in line with the rest of the city. And so I'm grateful for everyone involved in this project. I have in-laws who are older, I mean, I think Beverly also said it well, who are thinking about aging in place. And I think something like this is what they would be looking for. And so I think that we're going to have a lot of different residents looking to move into this particular project, where you will have college students, families, seniors, and I think that's the kind of place we want to cultivate, and that can support the businesses that are setting roots there as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? You're pushing your button. I don't know if you're fully on topic or not.
Yeah, I was just waiting to see if anybody else had anything to say. I will echo a lot of what Councilor Alamon just said. You know, I know we are all very busy people. We have a lot of things on our plate, but ultimately, this kind of project, this kind of transformation for the community that I live in, that my kids live in, that my peers live in, my friends live in, and honestly, that you guys from all, you know, all across the city come to for various reasons is, is the reason that I ran, you know, six, seven years ago. It's been a lot of time and investment. I think, you know, when you talk to your, your ward and, and you get out there, especially during campaign season, this kind of item continues to come up. Why is this here? What are you doing? What can you do about this? The unfortunate truth about some of this is that, you know, this property is privately owned, and there are some things the city can do and has been doing regarding enforcement of crime and other things, but we have limited resources. And there are lots of things that, you know, can't necessarily be done by the city. When we moved to Homewood in 2012, shortly thereafter, there was a nearby hotel that was closed, closed down. It still sits in essentially its current state today. I think, you know, moving forward with something like this, where we have a business owner that is currently willing to sell, we have a community member, and I wanted to highlight that. I think that that didn't necessarily get brought up tonight, but, you know, Tom lives in Ed, or, lives in Edwood. He lives in Homewood. He's brought in Homewood people basically through and through to look at this project, to design this project, to take input from the community regarding parking and what types of things, you know, want to be seen and experienced in the neighborhood. And Brian, I was going to go ahead and show a couple pictures. So this is actually what the neighborhood looked like when I moved in. There's obviously been a lot of change there. That building's gotten a huge facelift. There have been several businesses that have come and gone since then in that property. To reiterate, I don't honestly remember who just mentioned it, maybe Brian, but to a certain extent, there is a certain amount of density that I do think West Homewood specifically lacks, that areas like Edgewood do have, that help to support some of those businesses. So, you know, I've tried to do my best to let the business owners that have come and gone in some cases, let them know that we appreciate their efforts. And this is one way, or one of the few ways that we have with our vote to support future business owners and people want, that want to come in and spend money and invest in our community. Next picture, Brian. It's actually a, just a screenshot of the Regional Planning Commission of Greater Birmingham's video about the West Homewood Development District. It's five minutes long, so I wasn't going to play it all for everybody, but I have the link if you guys want to see it. And so when I ran in 2016, this is kind of the blueprint for the neighborhood. This is what got brought up, and, you know, if you sit there and listen through it, it talks about interviews with, or, they interview community members, they interview council members, the mayor at the time, to discuss what the vision for West Homewood is. And I think that this project is a huge catalyst that can bring pretty much everything that is discussed in this five-minute video. Now, there's already many things that have come, come into the neighborhood that have helped with that. Obviously, that, that corner lot no longer looks like that. We do have a vibrant business there that brings people to the park and from all over town and the Birmingham area as a whole. In the background, there's obviously a new pool. There's street parking that Tom is, is bringing in. That's actually brought up specifically in this video along Oxmoor Road as well. So, again, there are limitations in what the city can do. So when people ask us those questions when you campaign, you can't promise anything, but what you can do is try to, your best to communicate with the community members, communicate with people that are interested in coming in and doing things, and trying to find a way to marry those, those ideas and those concepts. And then, I guess lastly, yeah, so I'll spare you the, the video clip, but I, I got this and sent this to Chief Ross as soon as I knew about it. The Nexus Gym right next door just had their five-year celebration. I appreciate Chris Wade's investment in the community as well. He had just installed these cameras actually in February. I texted him that, that next morning and said, hey, can you, are those video, is the video live? Like, do you have a recording? And he did. So he actually had a recording of the burglary, attempted burglary and gunshots that literally touched our neighborhood. He's had countless cars vandalized in his lot. He's had one or two cars stolen from the lot. I mean, the list goes on and on. You can look at the police records for some of that stuff. There's probably more that maybe even has not been reported. But if you don't live there, you may not know it, but I'm, I'm telling you, these, these, these things need to go. This is a great way to see those things go. We've got people that, that are ready and eager and willing to, again, take community feedback, bring in new investment in, in the community. And so I just, to me, this is, this is a no-brainer based on the community feedback that I've heard. I know Melody's been fielding emails. I saw a bunch when the planning commission came along six weeks ago. I have yet to see one that spoke against it. Obviously, there were some questions that people brought up. I think Tom did his best to answer those. And then even, even in this image, that, those parallel spots kind of in the east corner of the image are no longer parallel, but diagonal angled parking to increase the parking. So he's taken some feedback and tried to redirect what he can with the development plan to kind of associate those things. So with that, I mean, that's, that's my piece. I just want to do the best to represent our community, and I, I think that they've spoken for, for themselves.
Anybody else? Tom, do you mind if I ask you just a couple of questions? And let me start with, I don't know if you can talk about this or not, so don't talk about anything that you can't. Can you tell us about the retail component at the front and what it, what the plan is there?
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've been honest about, we were working with two local operators. They were mentioned earlier tonight. It's El Bario and Paramount. That has not changed. We've not signed leases with them yet. We are what we call at lease. We've probably had four iterations of lease comments with them. It's our intention and their intention for both of those restaurants to enter into leases with us, and it'll be a contingency as part of the financing that Mr. Gualtney mentioned earlier.
Okay. Do you have letters of intent or anything?
Yes, we do. We have letters of intent. We're at lease.
Perfect.
We're, we're talking about indemnity language at this point.
Yeah, okay. Appreciate that. Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Walker? That was, that was my only one. I appreciate it.
Okay, great. Thank you all.
I did forget to mention that he's taken input from actually neighboring, the, the neighbors on Gillan, basically, who have properties that back up to this one, that have complained about drainage and other things that have been a nuisance for a long time. And, and so, again, just to, to Mr. Walker's credit, I think he's doing his best to not only kind of wipe the slate clean, but re-irrigate the whole thing and really take into account watershed, but also by reducing the amount of impermeable space that currently exists on the lot.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Before we get to motions, let me just reiterate some of what Mr. Alamon said. I want to thank Tom and his partners and for their diligence in, in both working with the city, being the fourth floor, throughout this, as well as interacting with the neighborhood. I, you know, that's, that's certainly, certainly what we want developers to do, is to, is to interact with the neighborhood and, and take in feedback from them. And, and I, I know we all appreciate how you've conducted this and how you, how you've gone about it, both in terms of dealing with us, dealing with the fourth floor, dealing with the neighborhood. Certainly deserve really a lot of credit for, for that. I also want to thank all of the residents for coming out. We certainly appreciate any time that we've got an issue like this. Hearing from the neighborhood, that's an important component, and appreciate you doing that. I think we certainly are all understanding of the situation that is there and, and what your concerns are with regard to the current business that's there. I think that everyone is viewing it simply as how do we best ensure that that, or that some future development doesn't, doesn't have the same problems, whether that be now or in the future. And so, but, you know, regardless of how anyone votes, I think everyone is certainly wishing the best for this development, assuming it passes tonight. I, I think that you've, you brought in two restaurants that I like to go to. And, and I, I don't remember who mentioned it about it being a destination, but that, I, I agree with that point that that's important, and I think the success of these two restaurants will be important for the overall project. I do worry about what happens if the restaurants are not successful, and, and what happens then. So, so I, you know, I think there are legitimate concerns that, that people in the public have, and people in council may have. I think there are also attributes to this development that are, that are very good, and understand certainly why, why there is the support there is for this project. So with that, unless anyone has any other comments, I'll get Mr. Kendrick to do the first reading.
Yes, sir. This is an ordinance to approve the final development plan described by the West Homewood District, zoning district for the property described in section one below and in exhibit A attached here too. Whereas the planning commission of the city has favorably recommended the approval of the final development plan as required by the West Homewood District for the property described in section one. Now therefore being ordained by the city council as follows. That the final development plan for the following described property described in exhibit A has street address of 195 Oxmoor Road and 536 Cobb Street be the same as hereby approved to be the final development plan attached as exhibit B. Section two, that thrown after the enactment of this ordinance by the city council and approval by the mayor, that the final development plan attached exhibit B shall control the uses and restrictions applicable to the property described in section one and exhibit A previously zoned to the West Homewood zoning district. Section three, that April 24th, 2023, at 6 o'clock PM is the time and place for the public hearing, which time all persons interested shall be, provide an opportunity to be heard. Section four, that the city clerk shall give notice of the, of the public hearing by copying, by posting a copy of the ordinance at the place as described once a week for two weeks in advance of the public hearing. Section five, that if any part of provision of the section this ordinance declared to be unconstitutional or invalid by a court of conflict jurisdiction, all other parts not affected thereby shall remain in full force of effect. Section six, that this ordinance shall be, become effective immediately upon its adoption by the city council and approval by the mayor, or otherwise becoming law.
All right. Thank you very much. With that, I would entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Wolverton, second from Mr. Alamon, and a roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Counselor Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Geer?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Neils?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes. All right. So now I'd entertain a motion and a second for approval.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Wolverton, second from Mr. Alamon, and another roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Counselor Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Geer?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Absolutely, yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Neils?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes.
All right. So that is eight to zero, and will be ordinance 2867. All right. That brings us to the end of that agenda, and we will come to, and we come to our committee referral agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the committee referral agenda.
I would vote to, yeah, second. And has anybody ever seen an agenda that short?
Take advantage of it.
You can't jinx it if you say it out loud and jinx it.
All right. So we have a motion from Ms. Smith, second from Mr. Gualtney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is eight to zero, which brings us to other new business, which is also amazingly short.
Yes.
The only item, 130423, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of April 11, 2023 through April 24, 2023. Brought to us by Robert Gette, Melody Salter, and Ms. Smith, I think you are.
Yeah, well, I didn't, I didn't do the invoices. Walter actually did that before he left for Mobile, but he had a couple of questions that Robert answered for him, and then there were a couple of late ads this afternoon from Dunn, final bills for the Green Springs project, which is pretty exciting, which I added in for approval. So I would make a motion to approve the vouchers for the period stated.
Second.
All right. We have a motion from Ms. Smith, second from Mr. Harden. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is eight to zero, and will be resolution 2366. All right. Which brings us to the end of the agenda. Mr. Mayor?
Just a few tonight, because I know we've been here a while. I want to thank Congresswoman Sewell for coming out today and giving us an update on the seventh congressional district. We certainly welcome them into Homewood, as we are now, part of Homewood is actually in the seventh congressional district, and we really enjoyed hearing some of the updates that she has for us. And we look forward to building those relationships. We're just a few weeks away from We Love Homewood Day, one of the, my favorite days of the year. So it'll be a long one, but we should, should have a lot of great things going on. Look forward to that. And then, valiant effort given by most everybody here from the basketball game last week.
Most everybody?
Most everybody here.
You're not going to tell us which ones are on each side of that line?
No, no, I'm not going to. I'm not going to go there. That's just me.
I just want you to know I bought the tickets to that fundraiser in December.
Well, it's, listen, John, you know, if you were a real team player, you'd have been there. But no, we had a great time. Again, the Exceptional Foundation basketball game is one of my favorite things to do every year. And it's, you know, we just keep coming on the losing end of it. We'll get better. And hopefully, one of these, one of these years, we may come out on top, so. But thank you, Mr. President. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Waltney?
I have no comments. You know, Counsel Harden, we could have used you. It was a rough game.
I'm good at one sport, but not that one.
We just, just one extra set of lungs would have been helpful, to tell you the truth.
I'm sure you really miss me, but I couldn't be there.
We could have used all the help. It was not good. My 12-year-old walked up and was just like, Dad, you suck. Thanks. I'll do better next time, kid. Do the best I can. Critical feedback. I'm not going to set public safety. We only have one item on the agenda, I believe, right now. And there's still some feedback we need to collect.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Gier?
I have a couple of announcements from the Arts Council. First of all, there was the drum jam that was held at Spring Park a couple of weeks ago. It was very successful and fun. Brian, did you get those pictures I sent you? I sent them to the wrong Brian earlier today.
I did not.
Okay, that's okay.
Sorry.
Not a problem. Anyway, young and old had a great time. There were over 75 people in attendance. Ice cream and lots of drumming, so it was fun. They'll be, the Arts Council will be back at We Love Homewood Day with their coloring books this year and just representing in a couple of weeks. And then finally, we are returning to art installation. There will be an art installation again, starting the end of May. And those are planned throughout the year. This first artist is Donna Fernberg, a elementary school teacher. And so we're excited to see her work. And she'll start us off in May. That's it. Thanks a lot.
Mr. Alamon?
I want to thank the library for coming here today for National Library Week. I think they do a great job. Judith is always staying on top of things and welcoming people into our community. I want to thank all of you today just for being willing to listen to our residents and always engaging in really great questions as we try to move our communities forward. And I also want to echo what the mayor said about Congresswoman Sewell and spending some time with us this morning. I thought that was a really great way to start my day. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wolverton?
I'll just echo that. I do appreciate everybody listening to the community at large. You know, this has obviously been something that I've been asked about for five, six, seven years. And rarely are we in a position where we feel like we have much ability to change, unfortunately, a lot of that. But tonight, I think, was one of those moments, and I appreciate everybody listening and supporting the seemingly the will of everybody that I know of that lives nearby. So... Did I have any?
Yeah, you got to do that.
Yeah, just that one for Edgewood Boulevard. Okay. And it's not a fence variance, because that would go to... Okay. Yep. So we'll set Public Works after that. But, yeah, really, from the bottom of my heart, I appreciate everybody for the support tonight.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Smith?
Same train. So appreciated Terry Sewell coming to talk to us this morning and our whole team. I've been on the council since 2014, and this is the first time that I have had our congressperson come to us to speak. So I thought that was really an impressive thing. And the fact that she is actively advocating for Homewood, there was some really good information about some money for sewer and stormwater mediation. So that was really exciting to hear. So really, really appreciated all of them being here today. And I do not have to set special issues, which, again, this is super weird. And I'm also going to just go ahead and say I don't have to set anything for Jennifer either. But in lieu of Jennifer not being here, she made sure that I had lots of tenants' information to give to y'all. So every single Homewood team won their match today and are advancing to the semifinals, all nine of them, doubles and singles. So they are...
Wow.
Yeah, so very excited. She, I think Jennifer's headed back here because Will plays Mountain Brook first thing in the morning. And she was not sure how that was going to go. But very exciting that all nine of the teams advanced to the semifinals. It's probably the first time that that's happened in a long time.
That's great news.
Yep. There we go.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Neils?
I don't have anything.
All right. Mr. Harden?
I also appreciate Congresswoman Sewell. She just, her chief of staff, did not tell her I had an 11 o'clock Zoom call and had to pick up a document before the Zoom call. But anyway, you know, it's probably pretty rare that a congressperson would come and hang out with us like that. And so I really appreciate that. I also want to thank the people who came and interviewed for the school board. It was like nothing I've ever seen as far as the quality of the people. And obviously, there are some of them who are friends of ours. And I'm very excited with who was chosen. I think it was the right person that was chosen, but there were a lot of right people there Tuesday night. And I've told people over and over, we had six people, five of them either had a law degree or an advanced degree. And so it was an amazing group of people that showed up, which is a testament to our city. And I tell everybody, this job's nothing. The worst job in a city is the school board. So they just don't know what they're getting into. But anyway. And I'm also just always grateful for the staff and the people who work for our city.
Hey, Alex.
Yeah?
I'm very sorry. Melanie, those came through, so if you want to just say where those are. Sorry about that.
No, I really don't know who they all are. Just some fun pictures that Brian Collins took at the Arts Council. That's who I sent the pictures to, the person who took them earlier. But anyway, it doesn't really show the broad age group and variety of folks, but I just thought those were a few fun pictures. The kids had a good time. And we really appreciate the support from the city. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Just a couple of comments, and some of this can be repetitive, so I apologize. But once again, thanks to all the residents for showing up tonight and really, for the most part, being, presenting their opinions on it positively and certainly passionately. And I think almost everybody did a really good job of that, and we always appreciate that. That makes issues easier to handle when there is differences of opinion. Those things, you know, still get handled in a good way and in a cooperative way. So I very much appreciate that. Secondly, thanks first to our Ward for Reps for conducting the interviews for Board of Education. Those are always difficult for multiple reasons. One, because we often have so many applicants. And two, to Mr. Harden's point, had really such good applicants this time. We say it all the time about how many good applicants we get. And I really mean it. This time, this one was different. It was really, the group that interviewed was really phenomenal in multiple ways. And so thank you for doing that. And then it's also difficult because, quite frankly, you've got a lot of friends that show up both for the interviews and that want to talk to you afterwards. People that weren't there for the interviews that want to talk to you afterwards about them. And so thank you for doing that. I know that's not an easy task, and you did it very well and came up with an excellent candidate. So thank you for doing that. Third, thank you. Also, I'll reiterate, thanks to Congresswoman Sewell. It really was nice to have her here and hear what's going on in Washington and hear her perspective. I don't think that we've ever had a congressperson that is asked to have a meeting like that, and I very much appreciate it. And I very, very much appreciate her willingness to go try to get money for us, and both now and in the future. And so, you know, she really seems to want to make a connection to Homewood, and I was very impressed with her and her message and what she wants to do in terms of connecting with Homewood and doing for Homewood. So I very much appreciate her coming. And then lastly, thank you to the Exceptional Foundation for having us over for our usual annual beatdown. It was as fun as always, if not a little more tiring than usual. But most of all, thank you to the mayor, because otherwise, I think we might have been in single digits without your contributions. At one point, late in the game, the council was oh-for-whatever. It was Patrick and Brian, and then the rest of us with nothing. We did show up eventually to contribute, but by that point, we were so far behind. So look forward to doing it again next year. With that, yeah, no kidding. With that, we will adjourn and see everyone in a couple of weeks.